Welcome, everyone. I now call a November 4th, 2025 regular City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the clerk calls your name. Clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kurd?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Khabra?
Here.
All present with the exception of Mayor Thompson, who is absent and excused.
Now, we go to the meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, public engagement opportunities. There are new services for Bothell residents. The City of Bothell and the YMCA of Greater Seattle have formed a new partnership to provide Bothell residents with free access to behavioral health services at the Northshore YMCA. Services include mental health care, substance use disorder treatment, and more. That line break there, substance use, that's cool. Learn more at www.bothellwa.gov/ymca. And remember to vote. Today is election day. Remember to vote. There are several local decisions for voter consideration on the ballot. Ballot boxes are located at the Bothell Library and UW-Bothell for King County and the Canyon Park QFC for Snohomish County. Ballot boxes close at 8:00 PM tonight. To learn more, go to voter.votwa.gov. And we have an artist meeting mingle. The Arts Commission is hosting an artist meeting mingle at the Bothell Library. Connect with local artists, enjoy snacks, learn about upcoming Arts Commission projects, and mingle with other creatives. The meet and mingle is on November 5th, and that is tomorrow, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Learn more at bothellwa.gov/calender. Public comment section. The city has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted sign-ups for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have had nobody signed up to speak. However, I do show one person in the virtual audience who has their raised hand, so I'm going to bring in Justin Beaufort to speak for three minutes. So, give me one second. And if anybody else is in the virtual audience, please raise your hand, and I'll move you in to speak. If anyone's in the audience this evening in person, please, once I call, step to the podium, and we'll give you three minutes. Jason or Justin, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, your time is going to start now.
Okay, thank you. Last time I was at council, I spoke of the disproportionate nature of frontage improvements on small scale infill development. I warned that it would mean that my project would not move forward and that the city would not get either its 60 feet of a mile-long bike lane nor housing. And I'm back to report that exactly what has happened. My plan to term was one single-family home, which was going to be a total of six units, is now gone. We've signed the rescission. Public works wield a very heavy hammer here, and this is the consequence of that. Council has done tremendous things to try and improve the housing start situation, but as long as things like this get in the way, results like this will happen again and again. As I said last time, if I can't succeed, I don't know who others could, given my dedication to the cause and time spent learning the rules and trying to make this work. Through creative use of state law and interpreting city code, I've come to the conclusion confirmed by staff that my only path to building on my lot is a single-family home. A single-family home, the exact thing council spent years trying to change, is, as always, the only thing we get. This is disappointing, but the corner I've been painted into. I've begun marketing my lot for this purpose, but I'm disappointed. The original plan of having three towns in the back would have allowed me to have a shared driveway for another ADU, and I'm now stuck wondering if I should have that ADU, as I will have to add a gate at the street, have people park on the other side of the street versus their off-street parking I would have gotten via the shared driveway, having to do a U-turn every night to park in the correct direction, have them walk over 100 feet to get to their place. I was targeting this ADU for seniors with a small size and a full one-bedroom facilities on a single level, but now that clearly won't work, do the distance to walk every night, every grocery haul, every rain, and also parking on the street when it wasn't necessary. In all likelihood, the single-family home will not allow me to share the driveway, and I will be like every other single-family home. I again ask council to ask themselves what they really want here. Someone once told me, "Do we have a parking crisis or a housing crisis?" I will now ask it the other way. Do we have a bike lane crisis or a housing crisis? Please do something for small infill projects like this. There's not a ton of economies of scales. I'm just a regular guy, not Lennar, not D.R. Horton. At the end of the day, I'll do what I need to do, but I'm really not thrilled to be the guy to build an SFR after all the middle housing and zoning changes. So, thank you for your time. And that's all I need to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the virtual audience? If so, please raise your hand, use the raise hand function, I'll panel you in. In the meantime, if anyone's in the audience here at City Hall, please step to the podium, state your name, you'll have three minutes. I don't see anybody. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, city clerk. Now, we move on to reports. City manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Tonight, we have two staff reports scheduled to provide some contextual updates for council on projects happening out in the community. But before we turn to the first one, I do have a brief update as well. Following news of the, we've reached 35 days of the federal government shutdown today, there's been several questions about funding of programs that are important to our community. Many in our region are concerned with federal funding and apparent reductions in the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, or SNAP, which helps provide food for those in need. Washington State is closely monitoring program adjustments and looking to allocate funds for additional weeks of government, federal government closures. But we know that the Bothell community members are also asking how to help. And so, we wanted to provide some information here tonight for you to be able to speak to your constituents and also share a little bit more information about what we've put online and what will be being broadcast out this week. Our human services coordinator has been monitoring the status of ways community members can both receive and provide support to those in need, starting in last week, and so was ready for this. And one thing we wanted to share is, to put it in context, is that according to the Washington State Department of Social Health and Services, or DSHS, there are currently approximately 2,270 clients receiving SNAP or food assistance benefits in Bothell. That's looking at the two primary zip codes for Bothell of 98011 and 21, which makes up about 97% of our population. Among with many partners in the region, the city will be sharing out a list of local food banks and resources for anyone who may need assistance, or again, anyone who wants to get involved and make a difference in the community to either volunteer or donate. In total, staff have identified 14 food bank options in the immediate vicinity currently. Those are going to be posted, or they are posted currently, online on bothellwa.gov/foodbanks, which will then bring up a page dedicated to food assistance resources that folks can find. And again, that is starting tomorrow, those will be pushed out through our communication channels as well. But the webpage is live right now. Again, not only these resources for those impacted by reduction in federal funding, but also an opportunity for community members to support others by either making financial contributions to the food banks, donating shelf-stable and fresh food, or volunteering their time at the facilities with food stocking and packing and distribution, as we do know that the need is higher right now, and there's probably a great need for volunteers. So, a good opportunity to get out in the community and make a difference. With that, we do have the two staff updates, as I mentioned. And the first one is, we wanted to provide council with some context of what we're hearing and learning and next steps related to the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space, or PROS Plan update. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Aaron Milner, our Parks Planning and Development Manager, and Blaine Land, their Recreation, Community Events Coordinator. Blaine and Aaron, take it away.
Thank you, City Manager Standard, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. As City Manager Standard said, my name is Aaron Milner. I'm the Parks Planning and Development Manager alongside you, Blaine Land, our Recreation and Community Events Coordinator. Will be presenting to you a staff update of the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space, what we will be referring to as the PROS Plan update. It's also worth noting, we have a consultant team onboard, Design Workshop, who will be alongside us through the duration of this process. So, what is a PROS Plan? So, the PROS Plan is Park and Recreation's long-term planning document that evaluates current parks and recreation opportunities and offerings for improvement. So, building off this evaluation provides a vision for future goals and priorities for the department. It's an opportunity to hear feedback, ideas, and priorities from our community relating to parks and recreation offerings. And lastly, the PROS Plan provides a clear, transparent blueprint for staff and our community on and around future strategies, projects, policies, and priorities. So, the plan, this plan is updated every six years to maintain state grant funding requirements through the Recreation and Conservation Office of Washington State. So, there's this recognition that also that community needs change over time, and the update process is an opportunity to assess the current recreation trends and our community values. Similarly, our facilities change over time, and this is an opportunity to assess conditions and anticipate and prioritize future capital investment opportunities. So, what you're seeing here is a timeline of our project. So, we spent this summer largely reviewing available data and laying the foundation for the project goals, approach, and community engagement opportunities. Here in September, we really ramped up our engagement with a number of tabling opportunities that our staff presented to our community, as well as an online survey. That's continued through October and now into November, where we're looking at where we've completed several focus group stakeholder meetings, as well as interviews. So, Blaine's going to touch on this here in a second, on this first phase of engagement. After this engagement phase, we'll soon be entering into the plan development phase, where we'll be synthesizing all this data that we collected, and we'll bring all this information together and creating draft plan elements, which we will then share with our community through the second engagement phase in the spring. So, overall, we plan to have an adopted plan June 2026.
And I'm here to kind of give a highlight over the public engagement for the first phase. So, we wanted to share with council tonight that where we went in that first phase of engagement. On this slide, those who are attending, and then the council can see, is we went to Park of Bothell Landing, we went to Sustainamania, Northshore Senior Center, Cedar Grove, Blythe Park, Arbor Day, and the list continues to different locations between the northern part of Bothell and the southern part of Bothell. What we also like to highlight is, beyond the survey, we had over 300 outreach connections. So, that means the youth that we participated at the Northshore School District's Youth Engagement Day, to also Northshore Senior Center's Engagement Day as well. The other element that Aaron already highlighted, but I wanted to focus in on, was the strategic stakeholder engagement. We had four focus groups, two of which took place in August, and those focus groups were our nonprofit Restoration Conservation Public Lands Group. We had about 15 people attend that stakeholder engagement event. And then, we also had another group later that evening in August called the Informal and Formal Leader, Community Leaders. And tomorrow, we'll have two additional focus groups, which one, one will be our education, and then the other will be our athletic sport programming. But to kind of go even deeper into who we reached out to, we had over 40 stakeholders that we reached out to through direct email and/or phone calls. Some of those stakeholders were UW-Bothell, Cascadia College, Outdoors For All, Washington Trails Association, Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance, Whale Scout, Friends in North Creek Forest, King County Parks, Snohomish County Parks, Northshore Senior Center, Bothell Library, King County Library, Alyssa Burnett Center, Eastside Pride, Northshore Schools Foundation, Bothell Historical Museum, and the list continues. It just so shows that we wanted to diversify our outreach and stakeholder intentional within the scope of the PROS Plan. And then, bleeding into that, we have our interviews. So, those are direct, one-on-one, formal and informal conversations that our consultant will be directing. And the other element we wanted to highlight, again, this is a very high-level snapshot of the survey. We haven't gotten into the details of everything, but we wanted to pull out some important items that council might be interested in. We had 698 respondents. We also noticed that the community profile matched with the current community profiles listed on the City of Bothell's website on our profile. So, you'll see that one item that we wanted to highlight was the South Bothell and Northern Bothell. On average, if we could do kind of a rest, in the southern part of Bothell, we have about 60% residents versus the northern part is about 40%. What you're seeing on this slide of the presentation, the 98011 South Bothell and the North Bothell, if you take the Snohomish County versus the King County, we're at 43% at the King County, and the Snohomish County was about 32%, which kind of goes into the trajectory of our community profile. And then, very likely and likely, the 85% in that question showed that to support the future ballot measure for funding for Bothell Parks and Recreation. And I'm going to give it back over to Aaron.
So, yeah, I mentioned to you earlier that we're now entering this plan development phase. So, a couple of things to highlight within this phase, we'll be looking at implementation of capital project prioritization. We'll look at overall funding strategies. We'll look at parks and open space acquisition strategies. We'll look at recreation needs and staffing and operations analysis and recommendations among the other elements that you typically see within the PROS Plan. So, once again, spring, we'll have another spring engagement period. We'll reengage our community and stakeholders, including opportunities for the Parks and Recreation Board and council to provide input. So, with that, we'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Oh, Councilmember Dodd, I'm used to you sitting over there.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. I really appreciate it. It's really good to see like how much work went into this, but also, I just want to acknowledge that you did all that work, so thank you for doing that. I'm curious, I got to participate in the 2019 PROS Plan as a resident, and I'm curious if there's anything that you're noticing that's different or a different strategy, like if you can compare and contrast that process with this process. I'm just maybe nerdily interested.
As far as the process, we can't speak too much to the data that we received, since it's so fresh, we haven't had time to analyze it much. But we are looking at recreation needs as something that's, we've heard from our community and council in particular, as something that's of interest. We've also heard acquisition is something of interest as overall strategy, is how we identify and acquire properties. So, those are two things that are kind of outside of the norm of our typical parks and recreation plans. And yeah, that's two of them anyway.
And I'll go off of that as well. So, I wasn't participating in the 2019 as I wasn't here as an employee yet, but I would say that from the engagement standpoint, a lot of the conversation was sincere appreciation to our current maintenance and the uphold of our parks, other elements that came that people loved the trail connection, just understanding that even more, how the synergy between Wayne to Park of Bothell Landing to Blythe. So, there was a lot of, you know, insight that a lot of our community understood the locations. So, on that end, I could speak to the 2019 PROS Plan of seeing some of the priorities that came out of it, but what I took away from the engagement standpoint of the one-on-one conversations with those at UW-Cascadia or down at the park is, one, they love the enrichment of our current parks, and they look forward to enhancing and maintaining what we currently have, along with those trail connections of better utilizing from, you know, one that came out was from Wayne to Park of Bothell Landing to Blythe, about those trail connections. That's awesome. Thank you. And I get colleagues from other cities, like not in Eastern Washington or anything, but nearby, who come for that connection between the parks. So, it is really cool. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just so impressed at the breadth of the community engagement that you've participated in and led. And what I understand, and what I'm observing, is that you, I feel like you've heard council say, like, "We want you to be able to reach out to a broader spectrum of community members and community partners." It sounds like that is occurring, and it really feels nice to be heard and understood and to know that you're really working to bring in as many stakeholders and community partners as possible to have this conversation. And I'm very excited to get to like, because the next part is, you have the plan development, and then you actually get to take the ideas to the community and say, "Did we hear you?" And so, that second segment is when it gets really interesting, I think, for the community, because we're starting to see how all of the ideas from across the community come together into a design, a vision, a concept. So, looking forward to seeing that. And yeah, I don't necessarily have any feedback beyond just a big thank you for everything that you've done.
Councilmembers Zornz?
Thank you. I wish I'd written something down before. The thing that I love about our Parks Department is it, and all of our departments here in the city, is that your sense of stewardship of the parks is really strong, and, but you also have a strong customer service piece to it. We're talking about hearing council's priorities and how much that's meaningful to us, and I think parks is a great, you do a great job of hearing what the public wants. They know they're heard when they see their things incorporated, and you really deliver on customer service for the community. And I want to thank you for it, because I know it's a juggling act, and there's a lot of things to finesse, and you do a great job. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kurd?
I'm encouraged by the amount of community engagement that you've leveraged this summer. You've been at a lot of places, which is awesome. And I am thinking back to all of my own contact with the community about parks. Most frequently, I hear that people are interested in what the future holds for the former golf course at Wayne and the Park of Bothell Landing. And I think because parks has some concurrent programs and concurrent like activities that are happening in master planning and design, are there opportunities for you while you're doing maybe the next phase of community engagement to loop those interested parties into those other kind of opportunities? And as long as we have sort of an interested and captive audience who's willing to take a survey, how can we encourage them to stay involved with these other planning processes that we have going on at parks?
So, yeah, to the former Wayne Golf Course, this is a process we're just now beginning, so we're going to have an engagement process here in January. And it's something that we're discussing, how we can incorporate and weave that into the PROS Plan engagement as well. I found that through our tabling, that was actually a really great opportunity to raise awareness, not only of those two projects, but other projects, cool projects that we're doing, like the Cedar Grove Inclusive Playground, for example, projects that people aren't all that aware of, and hear their input and their feedback from those projects as well. So, we consciously brought those projects forward, not only to just raise awareness with our community, but we're also kind of weighing them out through this process to see what's important to them, because funding these projects is kind of a next step for us to understand where those priorities lay.
That's great. I just think that as long as you're going out and collecting information from people, maybe it's an opportunity to let people sign up for future updates on something, or if you have a separate list on GovDelivery that you can include people's information, contact information, so that they can stay in the loop, because so often, we spend resources going out. The PROS Plan is a great thing to spend the resources on, because we get a really robust product. But if we're spending the resources on going to the community to poll them, I think having some way to group them into the future and near-term future planning processes is an excellent opportunity. So, that's a word of encouragement, and I'm excited to see what you bring back.
Well, thank you. I don't have much to add, except for thank you for the work you're doing. City manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We do have one more staff briefing tonight, and that will be on the Downtown Subarea Plan, another community engagement-oriented update. We're joined tonight by Eric Jazuski, our senior planner for community development, who is leading this project. And again, tonight is for information only and an opportunity to hear a little bit more about conversations that'll be happening in the community to inform next steps, and you can look forward to hearing more in the first quarter of next year. But with that, I will turn things over to Eric to walk you through some upcoming activities.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And yeah, great presentation from the park staff. I think definitely will inspire some of our project here, especially all that community engagement work. So, good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. My name is Eric Jazuski, senior planner for the Community Development Department. I'm here to provide a status update on the Downtown Subarea Plan Update project. No action by city council is needed today. So, why are we here? There are a lot of good reasons to update the 2009 Downtown Subarea Plan, which I won't go into today, but suffice to say, the city is carrying out one of the key implementation strategies identified in the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. As a reminder of the project timeline, we're currently at the early part of the process. As of this month, we're entering into Phase Three, Public Outreach, on visioning and scoping the plan, which I will discuss shortly. You can see the future phases here, drafting the plan based on that visioning, reviewing those changes with the community, refining the plan, plan adoption, and so on. For the earlier project phases, we worked with Planning Commission and City Council last winter and spring to establish a preliminary scope, which is summarized here. However, the authoritative vision, goals, and scope will be primarily shaped through the upcoming community engagement process. Some of the things that we plan to discuss with the community include public space activation, pedestrianization in shared streets, third places in privately provided public spaces, street use for food and dining, subarea boundaries and zoning districts, transit-oriented development, development and redevelopment of private opportunity sites and public properties, connectivity with Snohomish River and local trails, integration with UW-Bothell and the Cascadia College, review of existing zoning and development regulations, adaptive reuse and pedestrian scale infill, transportation to and within downtown, including parking, transit, walking, biking, and rolling, Main Street enhancement and placemaking, architectural and urban design updates, public art and murals, anti-displacement strategies, housing and affordability, jobs and businesses, including small businesses and microenterprises, environmental sustainability and resilience, and future funding and investments, to name a few. Let's review some of the milestones and activities since those spring council meetings. The city completed some early implementation actions, the first of which was to streamline environmental review of downtown developments consistent with the Comprehensive Plan 20-year growth targets shown here. This was done through city council adoption of an updated planned action ordinance in Second, the Community Development Department submitted an application in September to King County to designate a countywide growth center in downtown, which was another of the implementation strategies identified in the Comprehensive Plan. For some background, countywide growth centers serve important roles as places for equitably concentrating jobs, housing, shopping, and recreational opportunities. These are often smaller downtowns, high-capacity transit station areas, or neighborhood centers that are linked by transit, provide a mix of housing and services, and service focal points for local and county investment. Clearly, a good fit for downtown Bothell, I think. If approved, this designation will help the city to be more competitive in winning grants for transportation and infrastructure improvements, which will benefit the downtown, and for which some projects may be identified through this plan update process. The King County Growth Management Planning Council will consider approval of the Downtown Bothell Countywide Growth Center in mid-2026. The department has also made initial progress on community engagement efforts. A high-level downtown community survey was circulated in June with over 230 responses. Over fall, staff attended a few events to get the word out and test the waters for community sentiment. Finally, staff provided a project briefing to the Landmarks Preservation Board in September. One of the things that we heard from Planning Commission and City Council in spring and today was to provide a robust community engagement effort and to ensure that we are reaching out to underrepresented and historically disadvantaged groups. To that end, the department procured specialized engagement consultants as of August and developed a detailed work plan with them over the intervening period. We have Mr.- We have Mr. Ben Hahn here representing the consultant team as well. Thanks for coming, Ben. So, what's coming up next? The department's engagement consultant is beginning some targeted outreach to the community, including stakeholder interviews and identifying community ambassadors. Other activities that are coming up include tabling, walking tours, meetings with residents and businesses, on-street idea boards, and workshops or open houses. Approaches will include both digital and in-person methods. Okay. I hope this has been a helpful status update. Once again, no City Council action is needed today. And I guess that's the last slide. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Zornz?
Just a couple of things. The downtown Siberia, what, ten some odd years ago, is what ended up putting me here. That was part of the, I did not know that that was going to be the catalyst. And what I found, you know, it's, for a lot of people, that's an eye-opener about how city and governance works, which is great. I appreciate that you have displacement as part of a priority of looking at. We had a neighboring property that used to house, that sits on Beardsley Boulevard, that used to house a lot of Mexicans and retired people. And when the campus went in, it became unaffordable housing, and it's a total different population that lives in there now. So, I'm glad that you're looking at displacement as part of shaping this. And then the other thing is, you have a lot of players in this system. And, nodding your head, yes. And the best way for people to know that they've been heard, I'm just preaching to the choir here, the best way for people to know that they've been heard is to find some touch point that they care about that you've put into the plan. Because of, you know, all people do is get patted on the head and get a conversation that tries to totally sway them and drop the things that are important to them. They don't feel heard. So, finding places where you can accommodate everyone is a good way, people are thinking to know that they're heard. They won't get everything that they want, but at least they'll know that they're heard. And I know I'm preaching to the choir. I just wanted to say that, because I'm not going to be in your hair to bug you about this in 2026, but I'll be watching. And thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. The Councilmember Kurd brought this to mind earlier. Community development has a secret weapon when it comes to community engagement, and that is the Engage Bothell platform. And so, I really do appreciate how you've been utilizing that to get the word out to people. I still hold out hope that other departments will be able to benefit from it as well. I have been watching since it was implemented, and at this point, it has over 800 people signed up to receive updates. And not everybody is able to respond to every engagement opportunity, but it's a nice pool. And I do think that if we were to boost it to other departments, we would see more people migrating onto the platform, which would then help all departments and all efforts. But, you know, I really do appreciate the work and effort that is going into the engagement plan. I'm wondering, is it possible to see the draft from the consultant on the community engagement for Bothell plans? Is that on public record?
We can share that.
Okay. Yeah. It looks really interesting. Would love to see it. And, yeah, this is, it's exciting to see an opportunity to update this plan and to see what the next kind of phase is of developing downtown. And I'm just grateful that we're moving forward with it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Thank you for the update. I'm really looking forward to updating this plan. It's, is that 16 years? So, a lot has changed. We know a lot more about how Bothell's evolved, obviously, over time. So, that's pretty exciting. This is a very random idea, based on what Councilmember Alderks said. We're doing a lot of tabling for different things over the next little bit. And to get people on Engage Bothell, I'm reaching back to when I worked for a corporation. Like, they would do stuff like give out pizza if you took a survey about how much you liked working there and stuff. And I'm wondering if there can be some sort of, like, incentive, and I'll leave it to someone cooler than me to figure out what that is, to get people signed up on Engage Bothell. So, if you can show on your smartphone, yeah, I just signed up, then here, I mean, it could be pizza, but it could be anything. So, I wonder if we ever think about opportunities like that to get multiple things done. So.
Incentives are definitely in the mix. So, we'll take that definitely to heart.
Cool. Thank you.
I want pizza.
Pizza, personal pan?
Okay, no more comment. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Good. All right. We're now at the council committee reports, committee report, committee reports, committee reports and conversations. Council, please, you don't need to wait on me to call up on you.
Just briefly, I went to AWC's regional meeting on Friday for District Seven, I think it is. And it was a great opportunity to just be with other electeds from our region and hear what was going on with them. I think the only thing that might be of interest to you is both AWC and National League of Cities are forming committees. And if you're looking for something to do with your free time, you might go see if there's something that you want to sign up for. Otherwise, close your eyes and keep doing what you're doing. But that was the only thing that I thought might be of interest.
Thank you. I think we're going to move on to the next thing before somebody presses their button. Projected agenda discussion, ask if anyone, oh, ask if anyone, move on. Anyone have anything to add to the projected agenda discussion? I follow instructions really well.
Instructions out loud.
Yeah, I'm practicing my.
It's transparency.
It's transparency. Public meeting, yes. Nothing to add, moving on to consent agenda. I'll take a motion. Oh, Councilmember Kurd?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's been made by Councilmember Kurd and seconded by Councilmember Dodd. Anyone want to discuss? Seeing nothing. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes six-zero with Mayor Thompson absent and excused.
Okay, ordinances and resolutions. City Manager?
Well, we have three items for you tonight, and they're all pretty closely related. So, I'm going to do one introduction, and then let you have it. And then the reminder, though, too, is that it's a very special night of where you get to play two roles. So, Deputy Mayor, congratulations. You can also put on your resume that you're the Vice Chair of the Board, I believe, of the Emergency Medical Services District Board.
Can I be Vice President?
Pretty exciting. You can do anything you want. That's right. But, well, yeah, we'll have three items. And again, just as a quick reminder, some of this timing is also in terms of, we have a duty to report to Snohomish County by a certain date. So, we'll be taking care of some business items related to the mid-biennium tonight. With that, I'm going to turn things over to our team from the Finance Department, both Kwan Wong, our Finance Director, and Andrew Wachong, the Deputy Director. And we'll turn it over to Andrew.
Thank you, City Manager. Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. The first item we have is the 1% increase to the EMS levy in 2026. For this item, you will have to adjourn the Bothell City Council meeting and reconvene as the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board. So, I'll give you a moment to do that.
It says after your presentation, but.
Oh, after my, okay. We can, I will go through this first then. So, board action we're asking for tonight is the approval of the 1% increase to the EMS levy, plus new construction for the Snohomish County portion of Bothell in 2026. Just for a little background, the EMS district was formed in 2005 to service the Snohomish County portion of Bothell. Residents in the King County portion of Bothell pay an EMS levy through the county. And the 2026 budget assumes that the 1% increase plus new construction for the Bothell EMS levy is taken. So, now we are ready for board action.
Okay. I will adjourn the City Council meeting and convene the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board meeting. I will take a motion. Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you, Vice Chair Alcabra. I would like to move the recommended action.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Dodd and seconded by Board Member Alderks. Anyone want to discuss? Seeing none. Board Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Board Member Zornz?
Yes.
Board Member Alderks?
Yes.
Board Member Kurd?
Yes.
Board Member Menke?
Yes.
Board Member Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Chair Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes six-zero with Chair Thompson absent and excused.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. It says Secretaries, I need to, okay. I will adjourn the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board meeting and reconvene the Bothell City Council meeting.
Okay. So, thank you. The next item we have for you is the 1% increase to the King Snohomish County Property Tax Levis in 2026. Council action we're requesting tonight is to approve an ordinance to increase the property tax levy by 1% plus new construction for King Snohomish Counties in 2026. The 2026 budget assumes a 1% increase is taken, plus new construction for the King Snohomish County Property Tax Levis. At this time, we request that council approve an ordinance to increase the property tax levis by 1% plus new construction.
Oh, Councilmember Kurd?
I move to approve a 1% increase plus new construction of the King Snohomish County Property Tax Levy in 2026.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kurd and seconded by Councilmember Alderks to adopt an ordinance approving the 1% rate increase for King County and Snohomish County Property Tax Levis for 2026. Anyone have, anyone want to discuss? City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes six-zero with Mayor Thompson absent and excused.
Okay. The final item we have for you is the adoption of the 2026 Fee Schedule. Council action we're requesting is approve the resolution to adopt the 2026 Fee Schedule. And just a reminder, the majority of the fees remain unchanged, and, or increased by June CPI, which is 2.7%. The exception is, we have some community development fees that were increased per consultant study to fully recover cost. And at this time, we ask the council approve a resolution for the 2026 Fee Schedule.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I move to approve the 2026 Fee Schedule as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Dodd and a second by Councilmember Kurd to approve the 2026 Fee Schedule Resolution as presented. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes six-zero with Mayor Thompson absent and excused.
Excellent. Excellent. Now, we have a study session, and we're going to, you guys want to take a break, or want to just go to study session? Study session? Let's go to study City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, we do have one study session tonight. And Council, you may recall that in September, we did an overall update on council priority status, and there was a number of items that we're going to come back for further discussion. Tonight is one of those, which was, within moving in and around Bothell, there was council priority to consider, not to do, but to consider lowering residential speed limits to 20 miles an hour as part of overall safety improvement. So, tonight, Steve Morikawa, our Deputy Director of Public Works, is here to share a little bit more about a proposed approach, and just confirm that council would like to move forward with it before we start taking actions. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Steve to walk us through what's being contemplated.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. So, as the City Manager indicated here, to talk to you about a process to lower the residential speed limit citywide to 20 miles per hour. Wrong button. Okay, there we go. So, no action is requested tonight. We will be proposing a process, and would like feedback before we proceed on. So, as the City Manager said, and maybe I'm reminding the public at this point, but under your 2040 council vision, part of the first priority listed in the moving in and around Bothell, which deals with transportation, is to consider lowering residential speed limits to 20 miles per hour. So, we've done some homework, and we're here to talk to you about it. So, tonight, I'll go over the purpose, why reduce the speed limit, give you an overview of the research that's been completed to give you information as well as context, go over the proposed process, how to get there, and then go over some next steps. So, why do this? As you guys remember, we went through a whole transportation safety plan development concurrently with our Comprehensive Plan transportation element development. And the goals were to achieve zero deaths by 2035, to try to get to zero fatal and serious injuries, and as a whole, just to create a safer, more livable community for all travel modes. So, why 20 miles per hour? Well, the higher the impact speed, the greater the fatality and injury risk to pedestrians and non-motorized people. And this risk starts to rise dramatically at speeds above 20 to 25 miles per hour. This also would kind of fall in line with the nationwide 20 is plenty message, which has really caught on throughout the United States. So, Sherman Gong did some research, both within Puget Sound and nationally, and specifically talked to four agencies that he found had implemented 20 miles per hour citywide. And there were Madison, Wisconsin, Bellevue, Tygard, I don't know if I'm saying that right, Oregon, and Tacoma. Generally, what he found out was there were two methodologies. One was just to lower the speed limit citywide all at one time. And Tacoma did that, and there's a correction to be made on your agenda build. Tygard actually did that. They originally were going to do a two-step process, but they went back and did a one-step process. The second way to do it is conduct kind of a two-phase program, which Madison and Bellevue did. And you start off with a pilot program. I'll go into more about this later. I'll go into more about this later. So, the other thing this research found out and kind of confirmed was that not all local streets should have a speed reduction. And again, remember, we're not talking about collectors and arterials. We're talking about local streets and primarily residential streets. There are some local streets that kind of act like collectors. They're the main connection points to get to arterials. There's higher volumes and speeds than a lot of our local roads, and some of them have like lower density of driveways, so there's less kind of conflict points. Typically, just putting up signs does not like dramatically change speeds on top of those roadways, and what we don't want to do is create an unsafe expectation where someone, you know, there's a sign posted 20 miles per hour, someone thinks it's a slow environment, and in reality, it's not going to be a slow environment. So, we want to keep that in mind. So, staff is recommending the two-phase pilot program approach. It would apply to 20 miles per hour to a couple of streets that we select. We would monitor the effectiveness, and it would help us to better understand some of the implementation issues and the effectiveness of putting just the signs up there. One of the biggest things, however, that I think, it provides more opportunity to engage with the community during implementation. You know, we would definitely engage those two streets, the pilot program, and let them know what's going on, but that's also the first opportunity to go citywide and say, this is what we're planning to do through the whole city, and it kind of lets you kind of take a little bit of a step into the water rather than just diving in. And I think it gives them more time to work through the change that's going to happen throughout the city. I would also note that if high-end speeding on those two streets is not reduced and it's an issue, like I said, the expectation is slower speeds and it just doesn't do anything, and it becomes an issue, we would likely have to introduce engineered solutions on those pilot streets, which are not that cheap. You know, those would be things like speed cushions or things like that to try to get the speed to where we think it should be. We likely would not want to raise the speed limit back up to the 25 miles per hour. I would also note that in the agenda bill, we also said that without increased resources, enforcement will remain about the same on these streets, even though likely there's going to be a public perception that they would expect more increased enforcement just because those signs have changed out. So, at this point, I think I would like to pause for any important discussion questions, and I guess my question is, does this process sound about right for Bothell and how we would approach changing the speed limits?
I have a lot of thoughts, so if I start to rabbit trail, please say save it for later. That makes a lot of sense to me. I'm really happy to see this. You know, it's been several years in the making. I think this is a... I think that as a city with our growing population, we're going to have to face that we're going to be needing to add more traffic officers to manage our streets, and that'll have to be part of the budget at some point. But yes, the pilot program seems like a great idea. I do have a question because, and I'll probably circle back and comment about this again. I'm thinking of a couple areas in Bothell where speeding is pretty rampant, and how hard is it? And members of the community said, could we just put up stop signs, especially when a street is really... When a street is really straight and there's no curves, it's real tempting on a 25 mile an hour street to go faster than that, but if there's intermittents, places where you have to stop, you're not going to be gunning it up to get, you know, to get to the stop sign. Is there any comment or observation you have on that?
I think we have a lot of tools and the tool chest that we can try to implement before we would just plunk down stop signs, I think. One other thing about drivers is anticipation and expectation. As an example, like if you have traffic signals that are too close to each other, they don't expect the second one. So, things like that, you don't want to put out things there that would not necessarily address the issue but create some other issues. I think before we got to that point, we would do other things on that particular road. And again, it would depend on the actual road itself. Is it an arterial? Is it a collector? Is it a local street? Because there would probably be different things we would do on those roads.
It just seems like a less expensive way to slow people's roles, but...
But if there's no reason to stop there, there's no reason why to stop there, then sometimes it doesn't change the behavior or you get unanticipated consequences where all it takes is one or two people to just not realize they're supposed to stop there, and then you have even worse.
People are still adjusting. Even tonight, someone was still adjusting, but it's good. It's good to exercise our brains. I have some more thoughts, but I may... I'll save it for the end and allow other folks to step in. Thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome back. It's been a minute, and the methodology makes sense. I think what concerns me is, and I promise I don't save my 228th stuff for when you're here, Steve, but living off of 228th on the west side, if you go 30 miles an hour up the hill, people are mad at you, and yet that's the posted speed limit. And the same is true of the recently lowered speeds on former Bothell River Highway. And so, I like this, but I don't 100% think that I can appreciate what lowering the speed limit will do if we have roads where people already don't go the speed limit. So, I'm almost more interested in sort of a prioritization scheme of working on speeding and red light running, you know, especially I've talked since before I was on council through now with our police department about 228th and Bothell River Highway, and they're very clear that there is no staffing level enforcement that can help on that road because it's unsafe to pull people over. So, I would love to see solutions around the existing speeding. I think setting like local roads at 20 makes sense, but before we redesign pilot roads, I would want to get a handle on some of those spots because it just... I hear so often from friends and neighbors and constituents about close calls as a pedestrian down in Canyon Park, or I see like the PD pulling people over for speeding in the school zone, taking my kid to school, like it's still pretty rampant. So, I just would want to see more of those solutions spread out, whether that's... We've talked about very targeted red light cameras, not like probably whatever city you're thinking of, but just specific problematic intersections where, you know, human-based enforcement isn't possible. But I also don't think we will ever have the police staffing to handle all of our traffic concerns, so whatever other programs we can deploy. I just want to see more of that and more success with that before we kind of lower the speed limit because I worry that it won't do much, practically speaking. So, I like the plan. I just... That means that I'll go the speed limit, you know, the vast majority of the time, and then probably get tailgated for doing it, so I wonder what that would look like.
So, things can happen concurrently. Usually, the solutions aren't going to just be one type of solution over all types of roads. So, remember, these are local roads, and remember, the first thing that we're going to do as staff is identify those roads that we don't think you're ever... Just posted a speed sign is not going to make any difference at all. There have been some of these, like Bellevue did a... They're pretty good. They do a study and they kind of follow up, and this is part of the things we need to do is monitor what it does. And it will make changes. It's not dramatic, like you're not going to see just everybody slow down already, but they have seen things like over 30 going down to like 40%. So, there's still people going over 30. It's just that they got less people going over 30. This will not take care of collectors. This will not take care of arterials like 228th and Bothell River Highway. Those are going to be different solutions. Bothell River Highway, as an example, as we're designing the road right now, we're looking at it much different than they did in 1950s, 60s, and 70s, where wider is better and make it easy for the car. So, we're trying to look at that so when we post a 30, 35 mile per hour speed limit, it's appropriate and looks and feels like it should drive 30, 35. So, you're right, this won't happen. This won't address those issues. This will address more of most of the local streets that are not heavily used, lots of speeders, super wide, that kind of thing. And that will tend to calm down those particular neighborhood streets where people tend to live more versus just drive through, and it could have some effect on slowing people down and potentially reducing the amount of collisions, even if those aren't the high collision areas like 228th and Bothell River Highway.
And I appreciate you re-centering me on that. I think I did exactly what Councilmembers Zornz warned us about and got distracted by other things, so thank you.
I like the idea conceptually of 20 mile an hour residential speed limits. I think the data that you have there showing reduced traffic injuries and visibility and things like that is all pointing to the fact that we should be looking that way. I don't know if we have data on complaints that come in on local roads versus like the arterials and others where we see the massive speeding. I too feel the 228th pain and also the Bothell River Highway pain, people tailgating if you're going the speed limit or even five miles an hour over, people are still tailgating you. So, I will not go that direction, but I would like to see the city address that too. But conceptually, 20 mile an hour pilot sounds good to me, and I'd like to see more data about what comes of that when we do it. I don't know if we've identified potential areas to implement that, but directionally, I think that's something we should tackle.
Okay. Thank you.
20 is plenty is kind of an old topic now. I'm actually kind of surprised that we're just getting around to it now. Listening to the presentation, I'm just struck by how doing a phased approach is just... We know what the outcome is going to be, and it's going to be deployment of 20 mile an hour speed limit signs on every local road eventually, so I'm not certain why chunking it out and piloting it is going to do anything but maybe cause confusion or sort of slow-roll deployment of a 20 mile an hour limit throughout the city. I know it can seem costly, but we shouldn't be doing things that aren't going to result in reduction in unsafe speeds. And so, if this is something truly that the research shows is going to reduce unsafe speeds, which it does, I think we need to get all in and just do it, rather than piloting and then hearing complaints and then slow-rolling it around the rest of the city when we know that ultimately it has to be done. So, I also agree that speed limits are suggestions, really, when we don't enforce, and so I support actions that are going to increase automatic enforcement when it's justified. I think also hardscape improvements or trees, you know. Bellevue has a great speed reduction plan that has a menu of different options and suggestions, and it's a street-by-street fit sort of manual that they have developed over a long period of... I mean, they've been doing this since the 90s, so Bellevue really has a good handle on the details and some of the challenges. I'm glad that Sherman was talking with Transpo at Bellevue, but I think that this has already been done. This is old hat. Let's just do it, and I'm hesitant to slow-roll. One question I have for you is, what sort of data do we have right now about speeds throughout Bothell? Sometimes I see that there are contractors collecting information off of the roads. Sometimes you drive over the bum-bum, bum-bum, and you hear, and you're like, oh, my speed, what was I doing? And you... That data isn't really publicly consumable, but in Bellevue, it is. And that sort of transparency has showed that some community members, when they were doing the slow-roll pilot in the three spots around Bellevue, and then overall, now they've... In October, they have brought it on citywide as a... And they've adopted it citywide, but what is the data that we have? What are the data gaps that you see? And, you know, if we do an experiment, if we do it in a pilot form, which I don't really like, but whatever, what sort of expectation are we trying to get at with our data?
So, we don't have any data, and that's part of the problem. We don't do speed counts on local residential streets, most of them. Typically, our budget allows us to do every other year on arterials and some collectors, and that's all we have. So, this would help us. We've talked, again, a few agencies. Some of them have put it out, you know, Seattle, Tacoma, they have a bigger department, they have a lot more data, a lot more resources. A couple of the agencies recommend we did this because it allows you to at least do a checkpoint on yourself if you don't have data, and that's what we don't have. So, one of the things we would do is probably... We'd have to do before and after, we'd probably do collision data on those particular streets, and then we would compare and see how it's going over a three to six-month period. And then even when we roll it out to the citywide, because like you, I don't anticipate most of the streets have been an issue, some of the streets upfront, we're going to try to identify, but again, I think the pilot will help us confirm whether we're using the right criteria. Even after we do that, as an example, Bellevue is going to go in and they're going to take like 50 samples of speeds on those roads just to see actually what occurred, and we would probably have to do the same thing and monitor things. The only real concern that I particularly have is if it... If the street... If we miss a street that has a lot of high-speed ends and we don't know about it, and we try to put this on there and it doesn't do anything, that's the environment I'm very leery of, is that unanticipated... People think, or somebody, you know, a guest comes to your house and they drive on the road, they see 20 miles per hour, and they say, oh, my kids can play and do all kinds of things, and that's just not true. Those are the ones we're mostly worried about. I think we've got the bulk of them. I think it's those outliers that we really want to test and make sure we're doing okay.
I think this is... So, I travel to Boulder, and they have a 20 mile an hour limit on all neighborhood streets, and you know that those streets aren't designed. They were developed in the 50s. It's a suburb. And you know that those streets aren't, like even coming from a different place. I think visitors, that's not really a good enough reason not to do it citywide. And by doing it in zones and segments, you start introducing confusion rather than doing it citywide. So, I would tend... If that's really truly a concern, I would say we really need to do it citywide all at once, have the messaging really deeply in the community, and get everyone on board at the same time rather than in pockets.
We're not doing pockets. We're doing probably one or two streets, and again, using it as a tool to roll it out for citywide.
And that's a proposal, but I do think we want to hear feedback from the full council on this tonight on the approach. I mean, that is the intent of tonight, is to see, is it better to do... Find an approach and bring you back an option that does do more of a citywide all at once or if the pilot approach works. So, we'd love to hear more feedback.
Just to clarify and answer to Councilmember Kurd, you mentioned you're using the... Because I kind of agree with what Councilmember Kurd was saying, but do you... The reason you want to do a pilot because we don't have data, so we can collect the data, so we can start testing and measuring as we move forward, or is it because we don't have the resources to implement citywide? Like, what's the goal of doing a pilot versus rollout?
I think more of the first than the latter.
Just collect the data because we don't have any?
Well, again, two reasons. One is we're making assumptions on which streets that we feel would be unsafe to put 20 miles per hour just because it's not going to change the behavior, and then you're going to have 20 miles per hour, people are trying to drive at 20, people are getting upset at people driving at 20, and, you know, kids walking across and they're assuming it's 20, it's not. So, we don't want that environment, so that's one. The second one, and that's what we're upfront going to do, is trying to identify those. So, those one or two streets, we would try to pick ones that are kind of representative, that we think would help us confirm that selection process as well as make sure we understand what's going to happen, how well it's received, how well that community locally receives it, so that we can make sure when we roll it out in the bigger one, we have some... in the bigger one, we have some information. Um, I think if we were to roll it out bigger, I think we'd be a little more cautious in terms of making sure we have data upfront before we roll it out bigger. And I'm not sure if that would save us time because we would have to collect data to verify ourselves.
Steve, can you, uh, refresh, what would be the anticipated duration? So if you went with the pilot mode, like what, how, what's the length of time between start and completion throughout the community and is that known?
So what we've seen, what's not known in Bothell, from what we've seen in other communities is taken anywhere from two to four years. I think we would be on the shorter end because we're a smaller agency and I think we're only doing one or two pilots. Um, it's also dependent on resources to get us there.
So I may be inferring too much here, but to do a pilot study, one or two pilot studies, my impression is that it's to gather information about what's gonna work well for Bothell, what should we be mindful of for Bothell, what's gonna be best fit for To- Bothell. And also, um, the rollout time period for doing for the whole city is also a consideration of just the logistics of, you know, from giving it the green light to actually implement is also a consideration. And that pilot study is helping shape the rollout. Am I understanding correctly?
I think it's given us information. I think it's shaping the rollout in the sense of the public engagement because I think it gives us an opportunity to, rather than drop it on the entire community, basically say, this is what's gonna happen. These are the two locations where we're gonna test it out. You can, you can see in about six months, it's gonna roll into the, the citywide. Yeah. I also wanna make sure you guys understand when we put out signs, every single street's not gonna have a twenty mile per hour sign. Every single street right now does not have a twenty-five mile per hour sign. That's just the standard. So there's some way you need to let everybody know, people who live here, but also people visiting here, that it's twenty miles per hour. So that's typically at the entrances to Bothell, you know, rather than putting up hundreds and hundreds of signs.
Is there a, like, tech solution for getting it out to like Apple Maps, Google Maps? So when we do have visitors driving through town, their maps are actually showing them the accurate speed limit?
That's a great question. I would imagine.
It does update, I will tell you, cause I watched for that on Bothell River Highway or not Bothell, whatever you wanna call it. Um, it wasn't immediate, but like Apple Maps in particular tells you the speed limit on the road you're on, um, which is handy cause there aren't signs everywhere. Do you have like an inventory of where there are signs? Is that how you keep track of them?
I'm pretty sure chat has an inventory, but again, these would be a little different because currently what it is, is the state, everywhere in the state's twenty-five miles per hour unless you're told otherwise.
Yeah.
Now it's gonna change within Bothell's twenty miles per hour and adjacent Kenmore might not be and Woodinville might not be. So we're, somehow you have to let people know.
I don't know about Google Maps. I'm one of the two percent of people.
Yeah, and there, there is a, there is a method of being able to report that to.
Okay. I was just thinking for getting people who don't live here used to it. If we're gonna do a campaign blitz in Both- Bothell for residents, that's one way to do it. And then people coming in hopefully are using their maps to try to navigate. That's another way to do it for those folks. And we already know from our speed cameras that some people just don't pay attention anyway. So we'll miss, miss those people or we'll get those people, but, um, just trying to think through like practically how we, how we make sure people are, for the most part, trying to drive the speed limit. I've seen things, um, close to my neighborhood on two, let's see, two hundred and twelfth, it's a downhill slope and some of their neighbors have put out those kind of A board signs and they've put giant boulders underneath them. So when people try to hit them and knock them over, you know, they're, they're hitting rocks. So that, those things worry me. That tells me like there's enough speeding in that area that people are trying to find their own solutions that are working and not working. And I, I would rather us have posted speed limit signs and things like that than having people go take their own, uh, measures. So just something to think about.
I wanted to jump in cause I've been really enjoying the discussion. I do wonder instead of a pilot, if it's just, we change them all. Maybe we send a postcard that's like, we're doing this, here's why. I think not enough people know about the difference between twenty and thirty miles per hour. Cause I didn't know that until I did the police department's community academy. And that sort of completely changed the mind frame that I had around the speed I was going as a driver. Um, and probably someone told me in driver's ed and I didn't internalize it the same as a sixteen-year-old versus a nineteen-year-old. Um, so I, I like the idea of just, let's have a hub to, cause we've talked before, I've talked before and I've heard a lot of my colleagues agree that a, a near miss dashboard and heat map of the city would be really helpful, especially where people can easily report that. I know before he retired, Jamal had data, but I've just never seen it in the whole time I've cared. Um, and an ability for people to easily report problem areas. So instead of a pilot limited term, let's just throw everything at it. And like, I think twenty is plenty. I like that it rhymes. And, um, like, let's, I don't know, we could do something cute, but let's just say, tell us how it's going. And I think that I wanna go faster. That's always gonna happen. I don't know if anybody hangs out in digital Kenmore, but people are like, I keep getting tickets. And it's like, wow. Um, but I just, um, I worry that we will be too cautious and it will just take longer. And I, I think I would, there are things we can do concurrently, but we only have so much staff. So what if we just did it and it was done and we went from there? I realize that's antithetical to local government, but I had to try.
This has been a really interesting conversation. Um, I've really appreciated the, the thoughts that have been shared. I, I definitely have thoughts. Um, and, and I apologize in advance for kind of taking us back to, um, to the wording of the vision and strategic priorities because, uh, this pro- this process is actually going quite differently than I thought that it would. Um, because on page fifteen of the vision priorities document, the, um, the, this goal that was expressed by council was draft to develop a plan to achieve zero traffic deaths through safe streets infrastructure. And then there were two examples given. Consider lowering residential speed limits to twenty miles per hour and consider traffic calming strategies in neighborhoods. Um, I thought that we would be receiving a plan that would be about how, like, what are all of the multi-pronged approaches, all of the strategies that we can employ and choose from when, um, working to achieve zero traffic deaths, one of them being twenty miles an hour. And so I feel like the order is going differently than what I anticipated because this is, like spoken about earlier, this is a strategy that is one of many strategies to achieve vision zero. Um, and, and I think I would like to see how they work together. And like, this feels taken out of context. And like, sure, we could reduce, uh, speed limits in residential areas to twenty miles an hour and say, we did one thing and then go back and, but like, I would like to see how it all, like, fits together and how it all works together. Um, so I'm just surprised that this is the approach that we're taking. But if I were to answer your question, which is, should we do citywide or a pilot program? I would, um, I would be siding with my colleagues who would like to see citywide. Um, I think that that's the approach that, um, that saves the most lives soonest because if we reduce speed limits in some, on some streets and it's really, and what I'm hearing is just a couple, which I don't even think that would be a big, a big enough pilot, um, then that means we're neglecting all of the other streets. And if there was, if there was a traffic death or a serious injury on one of those other streets during the pilot program, I would say we missed the opportunity to prevent that injury from occurring. Um, and so that's in part why I would prefer a citywide approach. But if we're gonna do this first, even like stripped of the context of a, a, a true vision zero plan, um, I would then wanna talk about how do we go about messaging this to our community? Um, and I don't know if this is the study session to share those thoughts in, but I do have those thoughts and I'm happy to share them at a later time, too.
Sorry, messaging the twenty miles per hour, the whole plan?
Uh, messaging twenty miles an hour, yeah.
Okay.
And I think, um, again, the, there, there was two distinct actions within the, within this, within this item. One was the lowering twenty miles an hour. The other was around consider traffic calming strategies, which did inform, um, a question we're asking the community tonight, uh, that the council took action on earlier this year to place on the ballot around, uh, safe streets and sidewalks infrastructure. So there is funding to do some of those things. Again, though, much like, uh, you're not gonna see all, that in place all at once either. So these are two strategies that work in connection with it. And I think there's, there's some thought around, okay, well, if the pilot of then, if, if we're not seeing results, how do we add other elements to see if you slow down, uh, traffic? And so then, then you're looking at what strategies you have. I do think that it also does work of looking at it all at once, but then, um, again, depending on what we learned tonight and then the coming days will tell us, uh, what resources we have for that second bullet that you're referring to around traffic calming strategies for sure. So one of them is a little more resource intensive than the other. Uh, and certainly on the, on the slower traffic, it is largely a communication and education, uh, effort. So I think, I think we're hearing good feedback tonight around framing, this is exactly what we're looking for, right? Is the framing of what would, what would success look like in terms of meeting the priority of what you're looking for? And we're hearing more of a go, go bigger than, than do a pilot. And I think that's, that's helpful because it informs how we would put this together and resource and come up with a, a strategy to bring back for consideration.
I would like to just jump in and say that, um, I neglected to say how much I do appreciate that you saw a big idea from council and you gave us a plan that would be that, that would be that big idea. You went directly to the specific. Um, and, and in this presentation, I very much see that, uh, public work staff gets the, the evidence and reasoning for reducing speeds to twenty miles an hour. I felt like this, uh, presentation was really well articulated on the why, um, and, and well researched and looking at examples from across the country. And so like, I appreciate the work that went into this particular proposal. Um, I just would like, not just go bigger in citywide, but go bigger in a more holistic view of what are all of the strategies that can, a city can employ to achieve vis- vision zero and how do they work together? So, sorry, city manager, like, go bigger than bigger. Thank you.
I think I can help with that. We did finish the transportation safety plan and it is online and that's essentially your plan for safety.
Does the transportation safety plan have, um, similar to like the safe streets and sidewalks where we've identified sidewalk segments and places to make improvements? Does it have traffic calming locations identified? Cause I think one thing I'd like to see if we're gonna move forward with, uh, twenty everywhere, which is totally fine. Don't have any problems with that. If that's what the majority of council wants to do, but I think it'd be helpful to follow up and say, okay, we're now gonna develop a plan or a, a inventory of places where we think traffic calming or other, um, that was it? Okay, cool. Yeah, it'd be great to follow up with that. So we have that. Yeah. Heat map?
So I've got more thoughts, but I wanna make sure, have you got more slides?
Um, I have one more slide which outlines the next steps, which would be a little different if we go full on. So I will hold back on that.
Okay. I, I, you know, if wishes were fishes, I would like to go full on, but I can also appreciate being sensible and having to, you know, dial it back and, and do a smaller project. But if council is going full on, I, I'm on board with that as well. But I have a, a couple other, a couple other thoughts. Um, when I was doorbelling several years ago and I hit every part of Bothell and the two major things were save our trees and slow traffic. I mean, every pocket of them. And I was trying to recall the ones that really stood out. And of course, you know, Brickyard Road, but we're deal, we're, we're helping with Brickyard, uh, we're, you're, too many syllables there. Brickyard Road Solutions. Um, but I'm thinking of one nineteenth where we had a death a couple of years ago with, and an injury with, um, kids. And, um, it's kind of off towards, uh, where our mayor lives, uh, um, west, yeah, but, but even more, uh, west than from Woodmore, um, closer to four oh five. Um, there was, um, a pocket of people that said, please put up stop signs and s- and slow the, slow down the speed. And I think that's one nineteenth that runs east west or north south. Um, so my, my one question about that is can we, it very quickly, I think within a block or two becomes Kirkland. Can we communicate with the city of Kirkland? What are, what, whenever we decide to move on where we're going to be reducing speed limits? Can we can be communicating with the city of Kirkland and would they wanna get on board with, um, that whole area if they're talking about changing their speed limits for, um, the side residential roads? I think that might help drivers who are going, taking the back roads from, um, Totem Lake to Brickyard Road, um, having consistency there. The other part where I heard a lot of speeds was if you go down fourth past Frank Love and you go down the hill, both on the east and west side of those, of fourth, all those side streets, um, uh, a lot of speeding going on. And so, um, addressing that area and giving them some relief, I think would be, uh, a welcomed, um, thing for the neighbors there. And, you know, like, um, Councilmember Aldrich said, if we can spare, if we can avoid one death, I mean, someone doesn't have their child for the holidays cause of, two years ago, they darted out into traffic and a person was going whatever the speed limit was and that, um, that child's no longer with them. So, um, thank you for doing it. It's really s- serious and I know trying to get people to cooperate with this. We, on my hill, we had someone, I had, I had five teenage drivers, four of them were boys, a little more lead-footed than my, my people pleasing daughter. And we had a Harvey and he stood at the bottom of the hill and gave every one of my drivers and every other kid down the hill, the stink eye, if they were going too fast, which was twenty-five miles an hour or more. But, um, I, I know neighborhoods are really looking for a slower speed. So thank you, thank you for doing this.
I think my final thoughts on this are that we already know that this is going to be, um, what our community needs. It's in the comp plan because people have been asking for it. Um, getting more data and putting out process is kind of emblematic of the risk aversion of changing up paradigms that transportation departments are, across the country are so commonly, uh, fall into that trap of risk aversion. But this is not something that we should be risk averse about is saving lives and reducing speed. Even if it's a negligible reduction in speed, it's still a reduction in speed and that's, that could be the difference of someone coming home or not. So, um, let's go all the way. Let's do it faster than four years. Um, and I don't wanna see pilots that take four years. Well, and I, I didn't hear a proposal for a four-year pilot either. Right? Right. But, but I think, I think, I think we've gotten what we need. And, um, just to, just to recap a little bit, I mean, I think there's a mix of things of where we're looking for a, more of a holistic picture. And again, after tonight, we'll have a better picture of some of the other tools in the toolbox that can be mixed into this. But looking at, um, not foregoing a pilot, let's see how we can go more of the community. And there might be some exceptions, but we'll bring in where that might, might be too of where, uh, there might be some areas that we need to do a phase two on, but more of a, let's reverse the, the, uh, implementation pie chart a little bit. Um, and also bring back, uh, I think for sure in the capital facilities plan conversation, you're gonna be seeing more around where would we see other infrastructural changes too that are part of this. And then, um, you know, Steve brought up the, uh, the safety plan. I think that might be one too, that as we continue to have conversations about this of bringing in some of the lessons from that as well and making sure that we're knitting all of this together so that we're having a holistic conversation. Cause I think, I think the goal is clear. It's just the how that we get there. So, um, thank you. This is, I think, very helpful and we'll inform our next steps.
Were you thinking of another study session or?
I think we can, I think we can take what we heard tonight and come up with a proposal and come back. I don't, um, again, if it's not, anytime that something's brought back to you for consideration for action of saying, go do this, uh, you know, again, if we got it wrong. for action of saying, go do this, you know, again, if we got it wrong, we can always say no and bring it back, but I think we got enough direction tonight that we don't have to have another study session. We can have something that's a little bit more of a, does this hit the mark, yes or no? So I think we can, I think we can frame it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
And before anyone says anything else, we're adjourned.